Is there a red button to hit?
My name is Father Brant Montgomery. I am the vicar of St. Mark's Episcopal Church on Lappins Road in Boonsborough, and also the chaplain of St. James School on College Road here in Hagerstown. And it's my honor to offer the invocation for today's meeting.
Thank you.
So let us pray. O God, the fountain of wisdom, whose statutes are good and gracious and whose law is truth, we beseech thee so to guide and bless the county commission of Washington County, Maryland, that may ordain for our governance only such things as please as you, to the glory of your name and the welfare of all your people. We humbly ask you that we may always prove ourselves people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogancy, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Endue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in your name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace here at home, and that through obedience to your law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, soften out our trust to thee. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call our meeting to order. First order of business, approval of minutes for June 3rd, 2025. Any changes, additions, or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, for oh. Commissioner reports and comments. Commissioner Harvey, I saw you on TV Sunday morning. Job well done. Would you start with comments?
Okay, first of all, it's great to be in Washington County. And if you look around the county as you drive around on the ice cream trail and other things, a lot of harvesting going on of the spring crops, a lot of baling and cutting going on. It's hot. I commend all the farmers that are supporting our community. It's great to be out in Washington County and to partake and observe all of what we have going on out here in our agricultural community. I'd like to take a moment to also comment on some progress I've seen in Hagerstown. Because we've, we had some issues there last year that were raised about public safety and, and concerns there. And, you know, I want to commend the city council and Mayor Bill McIntyre for their diligent, hard work in working through their budget to support the increase of the law enforcement, the police. And also, you know, they passed an ordinance that is going to hopefully help address some of the vagrancy and issues associated with some of the homelessness in Hagerstown. And I think, you know, the camaraderie and, and the discussions that I observed on Facebook of their meetings and how they worked through that is, you know, very commendable. They, they really worked together well as a team to address a very difficult issue. So thank you to the folks there and looking forward to the growth of the Hagerstown Police Department and their increase in pay, as well as, you know, hopefully the new ordinance will be helpful in addressing some of those issues in some way. Lastly, then, last week, we commemorated Juneteenth. We had a very nice ceremony the county did at Halfway Cemetery where we have, I think the number is 14, Union Black Soldiers who were buried there. And it's quite a story that this cemetery, it's a remnant, very small from what it was originally. But there's a great effort by the community to restore what is still there. And the county put a commemorative bench in there. And we're planning, I think, to continue to have Juneteenth events there in the future. It was a very worthwhile event and a lot of people showed up. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Leatherman, you've made it over a month now. Is that your anniversary? Congratulations, and we all enjoy working with you. So would you proceed?
Yes, thanks. Just two items this morning. Again, springboarding off Derek's comments with regards to the county celebration of Juneteenth. Wonderful day, great weather, just a very enjoyable event. The actual Halfway African American Cemetery, the actual address is 11,027. So 11027 Clinton Avenue. And I would encourage our citizens to stop by and visit this summer. A special shout out on that event and what is occurring there to Elizabeth Paul. Elizabeth has dedicated herself to that project and she's due accolades from the county. So second item, Hagerstown Police Department Officer Langley Dean. He was shot on June 12th during a barricade event here in the city of Hagerstown. He was discharged from Meredith Medical on June 17th. And I'm sure that I can speak on behalf of Washington County citizens and wish him a very speedy recovery. Directed at Langley Dean, thank you, sir, for your service. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Good morning. I also attended a halfway, halfway African American Cemetery ceremony on Clinton Avenue. I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Paul and all the volunteers that keep to maintain that property. And also thank Danny Hickson, Jamie Dick, and the Parks and Rec Department for that. We dedicated a bench there on Juneteenth, and they installed that. It's on a nice, nice concrete pad. And it's a, it's a nice place. It's a very, very reverent place to visit if anybody gets a chance to stop by on Clinton Avenue. It's well marked, and I think Randy gave the address at 11027. Also, I want to thank our emergency management department. I think they, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but I think we have some cooling centers on this heat wave. It's, they're talking a 110-degree heat index today. I think there's cooling centers available, and I'm sure there's some people going to need those. So they can find them on the website or contact us and we'll tell you where they're at. But we do have those cooling centers, correct?
We do.
Yep. So I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagner. I too want to mention about HPD Officer Dean. Every day, our police emergency responders give it to their all. And we want to wish him a speedy recovery and not just thank him for his service, but each and every one of you who do that day in, day out to keep this community safe. During the weekend, I did attend the National Road Museum. I want to thank Mr. Kisecker and his team for after 10 years getting that open. If you want to see the history of Washington County and how we were the first paved McAdam Road in, in America headed west. And it's named McAdam after the engineer whose name was McAdam. I didn't know that. Tom Reifert was the emcee, and of course, with his direction and Mr. Kisecker, it was a very nice event. I also did attend Halfway African American Cemetery in honor of Juneteenth. And I think you did mention Elizabeth Paul and Danny Hickson and Jamie Dick and his staff for getting that bench and everything ready for that humble and honoring those people that are the souls that are buried there. I also did attend the Miss Maryland Luncheon representing the commissioners. It's one of the most rewarding experiences you have when you see these young ladies stand up and talk about their credentials. Some are engineers, others finishing college, and what their platforms to help the community. And one of the young ladies, and I forget her county, was working on dementia and Alzheimer's for her community, which, you know, is something that I hold very dear in my heart. Also attended the Chamber Mixer at Star Community. It was a nice gathering, a warm day. But it was great to get around local business people and hear that things are looking good. There was all positive about their businesses and economy in Washington County, according to them, was doing well. I also was at the flag retirement ceremony at the Williamsport Red Men Lodge. The world famous Williamsport Community Band played. Troop 58 out of Downsfield did the honors of retiring the flags and the burning of the flag, giving it honor and respect. It was nice to see that ceremony and honor our country. So that concludes my report. And now we'll move forward to staff comments.
Thank you. I also attended the Juneteenth event at the Halfway African American Cemetery. I'd like to thank our staff, Danny Hickson, Jamie Dix, and the rest of our Parks and Rec staff for the installation of the park bench. I'd also like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for making it possible for this new bench to be dedicated to the Friends of the Halfway African American Cemetery. I also attended at least one of our employee appreciation nights, the Flying Box Cars events. It was well attended by our employees and their families. And I'd like to thank Human Resources and the Board of County Commissioners for providing this stay at the park to our employees and our families. I attended a University System of Hagerstown Board of Regents meeting. I also attended the Governor's Meeting on Rural County Public Safety with our County Sheriff's Department. Topics surrounded laws related to juvenile crimes, issues related to spikes in juvenile crimes in the summer. Also brought up funding for needs for facilities related to unfunded mandates at our detention center and our patrol offices related to sight and sound separation of males and females, adults and juveniles. Some of the other topics that were brought up included mental health issues, recruitment and retention of officers, as well as detention officers. Things that worked well here in our community included partnerships with Maryland State Police and our municipal partners here who have police departments. Our Day Reporting Center, which is a model for the state, and I believe it was probably the first in the state to offer that program for detention inmates as they re-enter to society. Also brought up the need for funding for our Public Safety Training Center. Met with Delegate Schindler with Commission President Barr, where we discussed potential 2026 legislative items. We reinforced to Delegate Schindler the need for funding for 81, our air traffic control tower replacement at the airport, funding for our Williamsport Library, school construction, replacement circuit court, as well as other changes to Washington County Code of Local Public Laws. And lastly, I'd also like to extend prayers to Officer Langley Dean of our Hagerstown Police Department as he begins his recovery process as a result of his line of duty shooting, responding to a domestic violence incident. That's everything that I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff I missed? If not, we'll proceed with our Youth Meritorious Award. Mr. Lesch, would you come forward with the nominee? Please introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name is Ariella, and I go to Williamsport High School, and I'm a rising senior.
Richard Lesch, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. And throughout the school year, the Board of County Commissioners present Youth Meritorious Awards to students attending both public and private schools, or those being homeschooled in Washington County. The following individual has been selected based on her scholastic achievement, leadership qualities, community service performed, or other positive contributions to our community. This exceptional youth has consistently worked and distinguished herself as a model student and member of our county. Today, we are recognizing Ariella Baker at Williamsport High School. Ariella? There's more. Ariella is a rising senior at Williamsport High School, has just completed 11th grade with distinction. She is an Advanced Placement Scholar with honors and was recognized by the College Board's African American Recognition Program. Academically accomplished and well-rounded, she is a member of the National Honor Society, a National Young Arts Award winner, and a recipient of the Minds in Motion Student-Athlete Award. Her leadership is evident through her roles as an officer in the African Student Association, a member of the Washington County Teen Health Youth Action Board, and a youth advisor for the Center for Youth and Family Advocacy. She also founded Echoes of Tomorrow, a nonprofit dedicated to empowering and amplifying youth voices throughout, through collaboration and opportunity. Ariella actively gives back as lasagna love and church volunteer, serves as a local outreach ambassador for the nonprofit Icing Smiles, and contributes to the future business leaders of America as part of their fundraising committee. Beyond school and service, Ariella engages in professional development as a legal intern for Washington DC lawyer, a research assistant to college professors, and a writer for the Afro Newspaper. She balances, also balances a part-time job at Mission Barbecue. And so I present to you Ariella Baker.
Ariella. Ariella, did you have a few words for us?
Sorry.
Would you have a few words?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. Would you folks join me up by the flags? You know, I'm a 19-something graduate, graduate, I graduated from Williamsport High School, so I'm a rural kid too. So personal congratulations to you. Did anyone come with you? You like to acknowledge or recognize?
Oh, my mom.
Who is it?
My mom.
What, what mom? Pictures up front too. All right. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Ariella Baker. We, the commissioners of Washington County, do hereby recognize you for the extending achievement of being selected as recipient of the June 2025 Youth Meritorious Award, Williamsport High School. Your academic competence, humanitarian efforts, and extracurricular activities and by your parents makes you a very successful person. You have proven to be a superior role model. We congratulate you on all of your accomplishments and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Again, congratulations. We'd like to present this plaque to you. That's yours. Hang on to that. In addition, we have a $200 gift card, two staples. Use it wisely. And we'd also like to present you one of our lapel pins. And what I'd like to tell you, a little history about this, the nine stars represent all nine municipalities. George Washington is our logo, and he was, we were the first county in this country to be named after General George Washington. He wasn't quite president. And on September 6th, 2026, Washington County will be 250 years old, much like the United States will be 250 on July 4th. We were succeeded from Frederick County by legislation, so wear that proudly and congratulations again to you. And mom, can we get bring in some pictures with the commissioners? Mom will get you some separate pictures here.
One, two, three. Okay.
Mom, jump up there. Are we supposed to?
Yeah, I think you have a good picture.
You don't want us in here, do you?
Absolutely. One, two, three.
Now, this is the one you can put on the mantle.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Folks, have another round of applause for this young lady. Contending with our agenda, FY26 Healthy Families. Mr. Lesch, your backup, please introduce yourself.
Richard Lesch, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. Here to request a motion to approve the submission of the grant application to the Maryland State Department of Education in the amount of $400,000 and to accept the funding as awarded. The Healthy Families Home Visiting Program is a comprehensive program modeled after a nationally renowned initiative, Healthy Families of America. The goals of the program are to prevent child maltreatment through early intervention, promote healthy growth, development, and strengthening of the parent-child relationship. This funding is valid from July 1 of 2025 to June 30th of 2026. Funding in the amount of $6,606 is included in the award for administrative support. No county funds are involved in this award.
Commissioners, comments, motion, questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I have first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lesch. Next up, Maryland 911 broadband. Mr. Lesch?
Yes, Richard Lesch, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
Alan had a prior commitment today, so I'll help out with that.
Yeah, thank you.
We're here to request a motion to approve the submission of the grant application to the
to the Emergency Numbered System Board in the amount of $2,681,763.76 and accept the funding as awarded to fund a multi-site, geodiverse, 911 system upgrade under a comprehensive five-year contract. This multi-site system will provide multiple 911 call centers backup service in case of a major disaster or event. The geodiverse approach ensures that if one call center goes down due to a power outage, network outage, or other issue, calls can be rerouted to another operational site. Including this funding request is the ForteGate Remote Access Firewalls with five years of ForteGuard Unified Threat Management, Patch Management, and Subscription Services, a five-year Hewlett-Packard Extended Warranties for all servers and workstations, five years of Vesta Call Handling Software Support, including managed services, monitoring, and remediation, antivirus protection, and patch management. This critical investment will enhance cybersecurity, ensure the system redundancy and geodiversity, and provide long-term sustainability and reliability of the Washington County's emergency communication infrastructure.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments, questions, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item four, Day Reporting Center. Folks, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Kramer, Director of the Office of Grant Management.
Major Craig Rowe, the warden at the Day Reporting Center.
We're here to move for you to approve the use of $399,350 of the opioid restitution local direct funds to support two of the programs at the Day Reporting Center for FY26. Approval of this request will allow for two vital programs at the Day Reporting Center to be fully funded for FY26. These programs are Washington County Jail Base Medication-Assisted Treatment Program and Recover, Rebuild, and Reconnect Reentry Workshops. Application for Moore's Competitive Grant Program for the Jail Base MAT Program and Recover, Rebuild, and Reconnect Reentry Workshops were submitted to the state for the FY26 funding cycle. Funding available for this competitive grant program comes from Moore State General Funds. For FY26, the state received over 150 applications and cannot fund them all. In this funding cycle, the state prioritized entities that do not have access, direct access to opioid settlement funds over those who do. This request is for approval to use $399,350 from the local direct funds for these two programs for FY26. These two programs are essential to the operations of the Day Reporting Center. The fiscal impact is that it will reduce the balance of our opioid restitution local direct fund by $399,350.
And this is just another example of the state shifting costs onto the county.
Bingo, bingo, bingo. It's a consistent pattern. Okay.
Commissioners, comments, thoughts? Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for oh. Thank you very much. Next up, multi-signature change order for comprehensive healthcare services for our inmates. Major?
Yes, good morning again. Major Craig Rowe, Warden at the Day Reporting Center. Move to approve multi-signature change order from $3,853,910 to $4,308,970, an increase of $455,060 for inmate medical claims exceeding the amount that was originally budgeted. The state of Maryland reimburses counties for claims exceeding $25,000 per inmate, and the county expects to receive reimbursement of $308,477.84, and the remainder can be absorbed in our FY25 budget. Washington County Sheriff's Office Detention Division is requesting approval of this multi-signature change order so the invoices for the June billing and the catastrophic billing can be paid and then submitted to the state for that reimbursement. The contract with Prime Care Medical Incorporated states in the scope of work section W that the center shall, upon receiving appropriate documentation from the contractor, file for reimbursement any funds received for the state of Maryland in excess of $25,000 per fiscal year pursuant to Maryland Code Correctional Services Article, Section 9-405. Detention Center has to pay the medical fees upfront and then invoice the state in order to get that reimbursement. Fiscal impact, the county will be reimbursed $308,477.84 from the state of Maryland, and the remainder will be covered by savings and other budget line items.
Commissioners, comments, questions, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On order, Mr. Porter, you received a letter of no trespassing. Will you please leave? You have alternate means of communicating. You've been asked to stay away from this meeting because of your disruptive conduct. I'm asking you to leave now. Seeing no action, we're going to recess. Clear the room.